Meeting called to order. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
She's here.
She's here. Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Everyone can be quiet, please. Please stand for a silent prayer, moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice is forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 3, 2023, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. At this time, the mayor would like to make a statement regarding the Asbury Park Fishing Club and Joey Palado.
This past Sunday was the 30th Annual Asbury Park Fishing Club. It's usually called a flea walking out. It's the best show on the beach coast for lures and everything, and so these lures go for hundreds of dollars. He'd line up at 5:00 in the morning to buy the seven great potatoes. Joey Palado and Asbury Park Fishing Club have posted. He has it on Sunday. And Wednesday, Tuesday, he dropped off checks for a house. He said, "John, keep these checks out." So he believes that a quick turnaround gives people money. So we need Debbie Dillis up here. We need somebody from Littlewood. Will. We need Lisha from Recreation.
Big Brothers, Big Sisters.
Big Brothers, Big Sisters. Boys Club.
Asbury Park Boys Club, fulfill.
Yep.
Clean Ocean Action.
No.
No, don't do those. Okay.
So Amy's going to refill your glass. I'm going to hand out the checks.
This past weekend, the Asbury Park Fishing Club held its 30th Annual Fishing Show in the historic Berkeley Oceanfront Hotel, drawing 1,000 visitors to the beachfront, with many attendees continuing their Asbury experience with visits to local businesses throughout the city throughout the day. Many thanks to the Asbury Park Fishing Club members who volunteered many long hours and to our vendors who attracted a great audience to this annual fundraiser. Their efforts enable us to make contributions to many local area nonprofits, including those in our great city. It is an honor to present to the city council the following donations. $2,000 to the Asbury Park Little League, Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Monmouth County, Asbury Park Boys and Girls Club, fulfill, City of Asbury Park Recreation, Asbury Park Boardwalk Rescue, Clean Ocean Action, Children's Trout Contest, American -- it shows how much I fish -- American Litorial Society, and the Deal Lake Carp Contest.
Which is April 15.
April 15. So we want to thank Joey Palado for doing this. Every year, he does an amazing job and does the turnaround quicker than probably any other person in town.
Thank you, Joe. I'm sure Joe's watching on TV.
Yeah, just very, very grateful for Joe's continued commitment to the foster foster kids that we get to serve. And obviously, this money goes a long way to helping us improve our impact in their lives. So thank you.
Will. Littlewood.
On behalf of the Asbury Park Little League Baseball, let's take this for Red Knuts. The community comes in handy. They're planning to get fulfill redone. Not likely to be in contract there tomorrow. We got any, they lose added, I'm sorry, scoreboard because of what $5,000, some dollar rent to the newborns. So this really come in handy to take the development.
Deputy, as the park work more aggressive?
Thank you, Joe. Love you so much. Every year, you are so compassionate. Even though you have some physical problems, you never let that stop you. You always think about everybody else first. Thank you, Joe, and thank you for the fishing club.
How many years have you done, Joe? Too many.
Fifty-two.
Thank you, Joe. We couldn't do the work that we do without your support. This contribution will make a great impact to providing the dream services for kids in the community. So thank you.
And Lisha from Recreation is going to accept one from Recreation and one we've ever sent to fulfill where the Fishing Club realizes how much fulfill it helped Asbury Park this year, feed our elderly, its residents. So fulfill this year. And if anybody wants to get a check next year, you can very send a thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Go get it, Joe. Joe, check. That's it?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
And if anybody knows Joey Palado, you know, he has two hats every year since he discovered this green. He said to me, "It's supposed to be a straight pass. What the hell is it, a goldfish?" He wasn't happy with the fish. Thank you, Casey. Thank you, Joey. Thank you, Asbury Park Fishing Club. Next.
Thank you. We're now on to special events applications.
The first application before you is from the Lake House for their block party on May 20. Next is the Pesci Time Tours, the Asbury Park Historical Society Annual Art Show, Sirens Arts on Second Avenue Beach this summer, Echo Lab wants to do a beach sweep, and Ocean Township Intermediate School wants to do a beach cleanup as well, and the New Jersey Haiti Partners Association requesting to use the senior center for their event on May 20. Are there any questions on these applications?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Lisha.
Thank you. Next up, we have a presentation concerning the residential and commercial redevelopment at 1201 Memorial Drive, Block 203, Lot 5, by Jamal General's Braverman Building LLC.
My name is Beth McManus. I'm a planning consultant for the City of Asbury Park, and I'm just going to open things up before we turn these over to the developer. As we heard from just the brief introduction as far as the agenda, this evening, we have a presentation by the developers for a site referred to as 1201 Memorial. It's Block 203, Lot 5, but really more specifically, it's that vacant piece of property along Memorial between Fourth and Fifth Avenues. And what we're going to hear this evening from the developer is about a development proposal for construction of about 126 housing units, including some additional features that I'll allow the developer to go through. But the one thing that I wanted to also introduce to the public is the fact that this is really not the first time that the city has thought about this project, and for those of you in the audience, this may not be the first time that you've heard about a development proposal for this site. This is a property that's been in discussion for a couple of years now, so much as going to the planning board in 2022 for review, when they got some substantial comments and they've made some changes. And that's exactly what we're here to learn about this evening. And so without further ado, I'm going to turn things over to these gentlemen.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor, Council, members of the public. My name is Steve Belin. I am attorney with the law firm Giordano Halloran and Cisla. I represent Douglas Development Corporation. Douglas, through one of the subsidiaries, is the owner of this property. They've owned it for five years or so, five or six years. So I have with me tonight Paul Millstein, who is vice president and a partner in Douglas Development, and he is in charge of this redevelopment project. Dan Zanetto is our architect from Bode, and Jim Kennedy is our project engineer. So what we're going to do is I'm going to have Paul talk you a little bit about the overview of the project that we're proposing, talk a little bit about how we got to this version of the project that we did today, from the start until we came up with this design, where we're at. And then I have Dan and Jim here, obviously, to answer any specific architectural engineering questions that we have. So I'll turn it over to Paul.
So thank you all for coming, giving us the opportunity. I'm just going to swing over here because I think it'll be easier. I apologize for my back to anyone. So we'll move off this for a minute and kind of talk about how we got here, and I'll go pretty quickly, but then available to answer any and all questions. We started here in 2020, was our initial submission with planning and some staff. And when we put this up, this was a five-story building. It's probably a little bit challenging for you to see, but this started the dialogue of concerns. There was concerns about the architectural styling, the colors, the material, the height, the mass, the uses, et cetera, the typical concerns that we would hear. So we were challenged to do several things. We took that feedback and we came back in 2021 with another revision. And again, we're challenged again to do some additional things and change some things. But the long and short of it is, we worked our way all the way through down to January of '23. And then with that, we landed here. And I think what I'd like to do is point out the key areas that we were pushed to make change. One was the height. Really, we were encouraged to pull it down to a four-story building as opposed to a five. We were also, this original building came out to the property line, which is basically the normal curb width. Through the years, we were really encouraged to push the building, both sides, Fourth and Fifth Street, in so the building didn't project past the porch lines of the existing homes that go down Fourth and Fifth Street, so that the sightlines would be maintained from Fourth and Fifth all the way out. So we shrouded it, which resulted in obviously a narrower building, but also these magnificent 50-foot, approximately 50-foot, open public sidewalks before you get to the buildings. That actually enabled us to do something we had done successfully in Washington, where we took that space and we created bioretention swales. So stormwater management and potential overflows from the streets could filter naturally through the bioretentions and back into the ground, but it gives a grass and boulders and this very natural environment that presents a nice soft landing to the building. It's just not a big building faced online, faced from a property line rising up. So it created that, and it also respected the sightlines from Fourth and Fifth Street looking past the building. So that, and that's reflected here. You'll see both these. These are close to 50 feet. And again, these serve a function. They're green. You can walk through them and things like that. We actually may try to do some like bouldering inside them, which could be fun. We're looking into that. But nevertheless, they do filter the water naturally. They're bioretention swales, so it takes some of the charge off the sewer systems in the city and it helps. There is a problem with some overflow currently at Fifth Street, and we'll actually have cuts in our curbs so that water could flow into our bioretentions because we've created excess capacity. And we heard, these are things that we heard over the last couple of years, are things that could help the project, you know, fit into the community better. Along with that, originally, we had ingress egress both on Fourth Street and Fifth Street. That was initially. We then were challenged by our transportation consultants to try not to do that because every time you're obviously having cars go back and forth across sidewalks, there's an opportunity for an accident. And those are scary because those are pedestrian sidewalks. So you don't want to, if you can do it at one spot as opposed to two, it's a safer building, it's safer for the community, less risk of accidents. So we said, "Okay, well, where would it make sense?" We were pushed to do it on Fourth Street because that is a street that flows through to the next town. It's a through street as opposed to a local street. There's more technical term for that, but I don't know what it is. But it was more of a, it was a higher-rated street. So we moved it over to here, and that's where we have it. We were also really encouraged to do some form of retail component so that it has some form of activity. So with retail comes parking concerns. Retail brings other concerns to the residential, but we were able to work in some retail to activate the memorial drive. So what we did is, we took the two corners and we did this one and Fourth Street corners, while they're very similar, for some small, it's a cafe, it's ice cream, it's a coffee shop, it's a taco bar, it's something. But then we created these really nice outdoor environments because again, with that 50-foot setback, we created little table and eating areas along with our bioretentions. So it's not a lot of retail, but it does activate the street. It will provide some activity, and it also is a service to the building, the people that live in the building, so it's a convenience. So we brought in two of those. The other concern is the balance of the first floor is parking, which right now, we're at 129 parking spaces. We're at 126 units, which we've been building several of those over the last couple of years. We're finding a one-to-one ratio is the right mix for us. People are owning vehicles differently these days, and people argue about that. It's not enough, and somebody will have two. Somebody will have two. Somebody will have none. Somebody may have more. We would just, but that's where we've seen a very good balance at the one-to-one. Plus, our retail may drive a little additional parking, but everybody won't be parked all the time every day, and there'll be some, although we'd be some open opportunity for small retail. This is not, you're not driving 30 minutes to this coffee shop, and this is really spectacular. This is not intended to be destination retail. This is neighborhood serving, building serving, walkable, 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 walkable. That's the intent. In addition to that, but as I was going, the balance of the ground floor is garage, but that's not very attractive. So we wrapped it in a brick skin to make it not look like a garage, but we also gave it a great opportunity for public art, which we have also done in several projects. We'll rotate this art, and we'll work with the community and the art group, and that has to be further developed, and we've got to go through a planning process. There's a lot more work to do. But the intent here is that we have these rotating arts that just gives more of a lively experience as you drive down Memorial Avenue. So some basics, 126 units, 20% affordability, and when I say affordable, that is very low to low to moderate. It's about 26 units of affordable housing. The balance will be at market rate, 129 parking spaces. There is another, there is an occupiable space on top of here, but we set it in so that it wasn't readable from the streets unless you go really far back. So again, you're not reading a 50, you know, a very tall wall from the streets, to give it a little bit of setbacks. We added balconies as a result of our meetings. We initially had no balconies. You can see from earlier renderings. The reasoning for that, we were told, was that it makes it feel more as a residential building by adding balconies. And we were asked to add them on Fourth Street and Fifth Street, so again, to just give it more of a residential feel, so we said, "Sure." So that's why you see the evolution of balconies. We were indifferent to that, but it was a desire that we heard. And that's kind of where we are right now. We've done traffic studies, and we've done other things, and we can talk about that. But I think that's the basic overview of the project. I think.
Yeah. I think we can open it for questions.
Yeah.
The questions are going to come from the council and then the public session, the people, if you want to stay public and ask questions. Then, anybody, council, ask questions.
So your affordable housing, what size are those units?
So there are a mix. We have one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms. There's a chart. We can take you through those. So I give you exactly what you're.
No, that's what I needed to know. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So the charts, yeah, here we have.
In the total project, there are five affordable one bedrooms, 15 affordable two bedrooms, and six affordable three bedrooms. And those will all meet the minimum standards from the state in the Asbury Zone.
What's the square footage of the three bedrooms?
The minimum for the three-bedroom affordable units is 1,150 square feet.
Thank you.
So my question is, I'm not real good with square footages, so I'm going to ask you this. For a two-bedroom unit, how many children would you be able to have in that two-bedroom? If they had bunk beds?
Well, I would, I would assume you would, you could have one bedroom would have bunk beds for two children, and one bedroom would be.
For the parent, right.
That's what I would assume.
But it would be large enough to have a bunk bed, dresser, TV, chair, space to play?
Yeah, the two, here, the square footage on two bedroom. I think they're about 850 or so. Yes, yes, they're.
Eight fifty.
Eight fifty, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
The affordable meet the co-re requirements for what the state requires for affordable?
100%. Spread about the building with the same windows and floor elevations as the other units. You won't be able to tell the difference.
And you said the traffic study was done?
Yes, sir.
When? What month, what year?
Oh, I didn't have, I wasn't.
Okay. You can get, no problem.
I know we have to go through planning and all that detail, and we'll provide all that. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And Paul, most of these iterations were a result of both the planning board's feedback and then, it's my understanding that you certainly met with several of the residents, including certainly one who lives right next to the building.
Yeah. The immediate neighbor was very vocal and very active, understandably so. He's the immediate home. So we had multiple meetings, and I had meetings with others, that other people in the community that sometimes said they were just sort of not share their names, but they were interested. So I tried to make myself available, but it's challenging to make yourself available to everybody, and I don't live here. I live in Maryland, and I come in, but I've been here a lot. So, but we've had a lot of neighborhood meetings, council meetings, and like the guests we have. That's how you see all the changes. They were all ideas that resulted of that process.
No, no, no. What we do is we let them present. We ask the questions, and then I'm sure they'll stay for the public comment. You can ask the questions then, and they can reply. So yeah, we just can't, or else we could be here all night. And again, this is just the presentation. For this to move forward, there'll be another meeting where other questions could be heard. So if anybody couldn't make it tonight, there'll be another opportunity to ask questions.
And if we, and if it goes forward to the planning board, at the planning board, you're able to ask questions, as many questions as you'd like, and make all types of public comments, whatever your opinion might be.
And I would just piggyback on that comment. There's actually going to be several more chances for public participation because at this stage, as right now, this project needs a redevelopment plan to be adopted. So the first step would obviously be a redevelopment plan would have to be adopted, which acts as zoning for the site. That's a public participation process. That's going to go to the council for an ordinance adoption, where there'd be a public hearing. Once the redevelopment plan is adopted, then we would make an application to the planning board. Again, everyone will have a chance to comment on the plans at the planning board level. So there'd be at least two opportunities for public comment before this project is fine.
Other questions? Okay, so this is going to be a short statement. When I first met Mr. Jamal, I Googled. He's built some fantastic projects, both Baltimore, Mass, every place, and he usually tried to keep the existing building, which I know you tried to do that here, it just didn't work out. So that's why they had to knock it down and build it. So a great thing, now, this is just Moore's personal opinion. When I hear Braverman Building, it reminds me of the 1980s and the county health department using it as a methadone clinic. So anybody that lives in Asbury Park knows what was there. Fisher's Bread Company. So if you're looking for a historical name, think about changing to Fisher's Bread, and I'll give you a loaf of bread. They had two outlets, North and Asbury Park. That was a giant, when I was a kid, they gave class tours through the building. Behind the glass, you saw them baking and everything. And then the neighborhood, I'm sure the neighbors you talked to would tell you, you love driving up and down Memorial Drive because of the smell of the bread and everything. So, and again, that was still active into the 60s, I believe, is a bakery and everything. And then they finally went bankrupt, and then turned it into like a methadone center. So I like Fisher's better than Braverman, but it's your building, you name anything you want.
I can tell you, I appreciate the history, and we didn't know that, and I can tell you that we will file tomorrow to change the name to Fisher's. And I will take that loaf of bread if you don't, if it's. We actually did the Wonder Bread baking factory in Washington DC at Howard University.
This is courtesy of, this is courtesy of Fred Bates Sr.
I love it.
Retired fireman. He bought the wrappers.
Beautiful.
Years ago.
Right.
And he puts styrofoam inside.
This is great history.
And I collect Asbury Park memorabilia, so he gave it to me. And there's a beautiful postcard. It's pretty rare, of Fisher's Bakery. And I have it someplace at home.
We'll do the sign as the same way, the same font. Wonder Bread Baking in Washington DC. The old timey little baking tweakies. We named it Wonder Bread, and we kept it true to its form. It's at Howard University right now, and we love that stuff. So thank you.
Thank you. Again, I have no more questions, so seeing as the council has no more questions, we're going to move on to a little bit of council business first, and then we will open it up to the public. So if some public may have questions specifically for you, so I would suggest it's to your benefit to stick around for.
Sure.
Questions. Questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. We're now on to matters from city council. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes, I have two small announcements. The City of Asbury Park Easter egg hunt Saturday, April 4, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It's going to be in Sunset Park. And then 14 years and older vote for projects to improve Asbury Park. And you can vote between now and the 31st. There is a flyer probably on the table over there. And these are projects to improve spaces in our community through the city's first annual participatory budget program, and thank you. So make sure you vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Chapman.
I just want to just piggyback on Angela. The Easter egg hunt is April 1, so I just want to make sure that that was clear. I also want to make note that the Deal Lake and Sunset Lake cleanups that were originally scheduled for Saturday have been rescheduled to Sunday due to weather. And I want to thank everyone who submitted ideas for participatory budget and those who turned out to see the presentations. The presentations were very well thought through and enthusiastically received. It was a fabulous night with a lot of community engagement and support. I hope that the intent and spirit of this initiative continues throughout the remainder of the process as members of our community advocate and campaign for their projects. So I hope everyone supports it and is kind to each other in this process.
Thank you. Councilmember Clayton.
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Nothing.
Thank you. Mayor Moore.
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Matters from the city manager.
I have nothing, sir.
Thank you. Matters from the city attorney.
Yes, and nothing at this time either.
Thanks, Fred. We're now on to public participation. May I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move to open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Public participation portion of the meeting is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone. State your name and address for the record, and there will be a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Again, your name and address.
Just go right back to the microphone. Yep.
Hi, my name is Bruce Belfer, and I'm your new neighbor, Mr. Fisher Bakery. How you doing? So we're across the street from you on Fourth, the old hog building. Right. So first off, nothing I say here should be construed to be in any way against the idea. I think it's a wonderful idea. I've worked on these projects all over the country. I'm familiar. My concern is twofold. First off, 129 parking spaces for 126 units. People parking on Fourth Avenue, it needs to be looked at, especially in the summertime. My guys get there at 7:00 in the morning, and they're going to line the street. So that's kind of a concern of mine. Other than that, everything else I saw in that presentation looks lovely, can only be good for the memorial corridor. And by the way, Mayor, it was Railroad Avenue.
Absolutely. When Fisher was there. Yep.
And unfortunately, I'm old enough to remember that. So those are the only two things I had to say. Wanted to introduce myself. If there's anything you need from me, give me a buzz. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Sylvia, Sylvia, the executive director of the Asbury Park Chamber of Commerce. Love a full room. Just a couple of quick things about what's going on with some of our upcoming events. We have our restaurant tour on April 23, and last year, we kind of transitioned it, you know, we're not a traditional chamber. We transitioned it into something that could be a fundraising mechanism for some nonprofits, and we supported World Central Kitchen, Chef's Force Ukraine, because we thought that kind of married nicely with Restaurant Tour. And then this year, I had that, I that, you know, think global, act local, and I thought that it might be a good idea to do a act local and act global. So we're going to continue to support Chef's for Ukraine, but also Mercy Center right here. And I'm embarrassed to say that I had no idea the number of people that they serve in their food pantry there, 6,000 a month, which is up from, I think it was about, the director there, Kim Godogno, she said it was about 300 a month when she first got here. And now it's 6,000 a month. So we're going to be very lucky to be able to support them as well. Our new county tourism director is really just going full force for Asbury. She has gotten PBS is going to come here and do some filming, including us in a series that they do. And the NJEDA is doing a commercial that is supposed to encourage businesses to open up in New Jersey. And they've picked three businesses in the whole state to include in the 32nd commercial. And one of them is right downtown. It's Confections of Rockstar. And they're going to be filming that next week. So congratulations to all of you for running a community that everybody wants to be in so badly. It is a real honor to be here and what is that? Welcome. I have a card for you. If there's anything that we can do to help you, once everything goes through, please reach out.
Carrie Turner, 514 Seventh Ave. Also the executive director of the Asbury Park Arts Council. And I just wanted to thank you in advance for considering the Resolution 176 tonight, advancing the draft arts and culture plan to the planning board. And Ms. Rita is right here. I wanted to address something. Those of you who weren't here last meeting, there was a presentation of some of the draft recommendation. I want to invite everybody to another public presentation next Thursday at the Asbury Park Public Library at 6:00 PM of this plan. And again, it's in its draft form. That meeting will have opportunity for public input. But Ms. Rita, right here, wrote something in the coaster that I think may be on people's minds. And she said, what's with all the art stuff when the city has such pressing concerns? And I think that she may not be unique in sometimes thinking about that. Arts are seen as a luxury and not a necessity. And I just wanted to use, I got two minutes. Some people smarter than me, Americans for the Arts, which is a nationwide arts advocacy organization, has the top 10 reasons to support the arts. And I am going to use my time to read them to you. And I would be happy to leave this with anybody who questions why we do this. And this is not to be confrontational. This is actually just to help people see our perspective. And we actually think the arts can be part of solving some of the pressing issues. So I would see it that there is opportunity for all of us to do that. But the top 10 reasons. The arts are fundamental to our humanity. They ennoble and inspire us, fostering creativity, empathy, and beauty. They also strengthen our community socially, educationally, and economically. Benefits that persist even during a pandemic that has been devastating to the arts. The following 10 reasons show why an investment in artists, creative workers, and arts organizations is vital to the nation's post-pandemic healing and recovery. Number one, arts unify communities. Number two, arts improve individual well-being. Number three, arts strengthen the economy. Number four, arts drive tourism and revenue to local businesses. Number five, arts improve academic performances. Number six, arts spark creativity and innovation. Number seven, arts have social impact. Number eight, arts improve healthcare. Number nine, arts for the health and well-being of our military. And number 10, finally, arts strengthen mental health. Again, I didn't make these up. There's a lot of research to support it. I would invite anybody to go check out Americans for the Arts. It's why we feel passionately. But again, it's not arts above all. It's arts with everything else. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Shadine Alsby. I'm at 1531 Bangs Avenue here in Asbury Park. I have, I'm not sure which board I should address in regards to this, but I am a caseworker in the field of mental health. And I would say the past six months, I've had approximately five clients that I've had to try find new housing for. And as we know, there's a lot of mental health individuals who live within the city. And a lot of them are being pushed out, even out of properties, I believe PNJ Management, who owns 1215 through 1217, where a lot of those individuals who receive a voucher, it was affordable for them to live there. At this point, we are, as an agency, and I'm sure as other agencies, who is finding it very difficult. And if it's going to be a situation where the city, property owners, and other people, you know that these things are going to happen and people are going to be pushed out, it'd be great to just have that communication so that we can find housing. And Monmouth, Ocean, Middlesex, yeah, I spent six months to the point where I had to find a way for their current landlords to keep them. And that wasn't an easy feat. So we had to make adjustments and do extra things just for these people to have housing. So my question is, for those who are on vouchers and have mental health issues and addiction issues, and they live in like boarding homes and places like 1215 through 1217, what, where do they go? Or is that not a problem for the city?
Are you done?
Yes, thank you.
I don't want to take any of your time. I'm going to let Donna answer this because I don't want to give you the wrong answer.
Well, I'm going to say a couple of things, just because we've worked together in the past with people. No question about rents going up tremendously. Some of the things the city's done is passed a rent control ordinance. We greatly restricted short-term rentals and all incoming projects, including the one you just heard is going to have affordable. So this isn't just Asbury, as we both know, this is all of Monmouth County. It's atrocious. And I'm with you completely that, you know, the rents in Asbury are obscene, no question, and surrounding towns. What I will say is the vouchers are ridiculously low on what they will pay.
Yes.
So it's very difficult to ask a landlord to take $800. Ocean Grove's fair market went down. But if you, we've done rent control, we've done short-term rental. If you have ways that we can ensure we do 20% set-asides for new housing, we are all ears to ensure that we can try to keep as many residents in Asbury Park as we can in a legal way.
Thank you.
Amy summed it up perfectly.
Do what?
Amy summed it up perfectly.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, Catherine Minervini, also known as Kitty. 1012 Fifth Avenue. I am in the vicinity of the project. And I think you've reached out to me as well, so thank you for that. I think I would parlay off of that comment about housing. I think that there's a lack of creativity when it comes to housing in general, and it's a problem across the whole country. I think the city of Denver just announced that they're allowing ADUs, which are additional dwelling units. And that's a way to allow gentle density throughout the entire city. And that would help all of us. And it would also, it would help property owners, it would help those looking for rentals. It would drive the rental market down a little bit so that it becomes more affordable all around. In addition, it, we don't then rely on all the developers, you know, no offense. But it gives all of us some of the responsibility to help out. And as property taxes go up, it also helps offset the property tax for the property owner. So there's a lot of benefits to ADUs. My other comment would be about parking. And I think there does need to be, I'm sure you did very extensive testing or analyzing about that, but I do think that we're going to have people circling and circling and circling the people. Some, we have a friend who lives on Langford. He's really nervous about that there's no, there's no parking around there. So I'm fortunate, I do have two parking spots off of Fisher's Lane, Fisher's Lane, but that isn't the case for everybody else. And I think that really needs to be taken into consideration. I don't understand why, I think the original project was 108 units, and I don't understand why, when the city of Asbury Park says you have to make some of them affordable, you add on instead of taking away from the 108. Why, why were there 20 more added on? So I have a little bit of an issue with that. I think, again, that's just a little bit of greed and lack of creativity. So again, don't take offense to that. I think that these are just some of the things that I'm seeing. And that's about, I think those were, those were my notes. Thanks.
So Kitty, just so you know, the last council meeting in April, we're going to have a presentation on ADUs and looking for feedback on how we can increase ADUs in the city. So everybody come out for that presentation at the end of April. We're going to take feedback. You correct anything I say that's wrong, Donna.
Yeah, and we're going to be posting a draft ordinance on our website in the next couple of days, probably after next Monday, that everyone can look at. It's by no means the final version. It's a version that the city council's been working on. We went over again tonight in executive session, and we'll share it with the community. And as the deputy mayor said, we'll have a public meeting on it on April 22nd, or 26th.
Hi, I'm Jill. I'm Kitty's neighbor across the street on Fifth. We have a driveway, sorry. My name is Jill Salmino. I live on Fifth. I, I don't recall on the diagrams, were there diagonal, was there diagonal parking in front of the unit?
On Memorial Drive?
Yeah.
No.
Because it seems like, I think what we're worried about and concerned is the parking. If you did the same thing that, I don't know much about this, but the same thing that they did like in front of the vet and the local fish, local 18, 130, wouldn't, if you push the building back a little, I know you'd lose units, I'm not sure how many, but wouldn't you gain like 50 spots or 40 spots? And then that might alleviate some of the problem.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Lou Salmy. I live on Fourth Avenue, 1321 Fourth Avenue. I just wanted to ask a question about the property. The, what's the setback from Memorial? Kind of the same tie-in to the parking on Memorial.
Do you want to like ask all your questions and then have them answered, just so you don't get cut off at three minutes?
Well, the follow-up question, second question, you can answer them together, is is there any noise, any consideration for the noise that's right on the railway there?
Yeah. So I'll speak to the noise first, because that's, that's the reason as well. So what we do is, we have experience where we built civilians across the street from a fire station at 6th and I Street Northwest Washington DC. And I hate to keep referencing Washington, but it's 35 years ago. So we used a triple-pane window and we were directly across the street. And when the sirens were on, you wouldn't hit, there was no impact from noise. So we intended to use the same window system here. We'll insulate the walls properly as well, but the glass is usually where the problems come. And we'll use a three-pane window that really does a great job mitigating the noise. We had success with it previously. As far as the setbacks from Memorial, I don't know that exactly. I mean, we're, we're at the property line and there's the sidewalk requirements. And Dan's going to bring it up now, try to plug it in. There's no, I'm not aware of any additional setbacks. Very different than Fourth and Fifth Street, where we, we had huge setbacks, more than typical. Memorial was pretty much on the property line, I believe, but we'll verify that now.
Okay, and we can go on to another question when you pull that up. We'll get you the answer, okay?
Pat, you can do it underneath. It might be quicker.
Okay. So we'll get that answer.
Yeah, we'll have another speaker and then we'll get back when you pull it up.
Yeah.
Yep, we'll have you answer. Go ahead, Rita.
Hi, Rita Moreno, Eighth Avenue. Thanks for the compliment. You would have been the hungry one person that called me. Anyway, affordable housing, there's no such thing. There's an apartment on DeWitt Avenue, one of the worst streets to live on, for $2,300. You think that's affordable? That's all I want to say about that. I want to talk about 1201 Springwood Avenue. That, people should be attending those meetings because they're the ones that are not making affordable housing. You have two family houses there now chasing the people that live there out. And it's just not right. 1201, they are paying hardly any taxes for that building. That's one, it's one block. They, they're paying about $6,000 and I'm paying about 13. You should be, people should follow the money in this town and you would see, it's not going for affordable or low-income housing. None of that is true. Everybody says affordable, but what is affordable? You have to get after the developers that are coming to this town to build. They built two family houses on Springwood. And then the Turf Lounge, they're going to rebuild that. You think, you think the people that live there are going to be still there? I don't think so. I've seen this happen in New York and other places where I used to live. This is what happens to a semi-urban town. This is urban because we have a lot of different kinds of people living here. And about the parks, go look at Sunset Avenue and tell me that slab of cement is artwork. It says the walls don't, if only the walls could talk here. I don't think there's walls in a park. I mean, we're not that dumb to think that something like that is pretty. I like art and I love art, but I like the good art. I don't like scribble. And, I mean, 1201, you have to get after the interfaith neighbors. And I want to know where our kitchen is in that little pool of café. That was an educational experiment, but now it's a real business. What happens here? Things like this shouldn't be happening. You have to follow up on what you put into law. None of the, the ordinances for the park are being broken. We didn't, we're supposed to have flowers and trees in the park and fix the fountains that aren't working. That's what you're supposed to be doing, but you're not.
Okay, Rita, your time's up.
Okay. You're going to follow up on 1201?
We'll look into it, but so everybody in the audience knows 1201 was done in, I'm going to say, 2008, when none of us were on the council, none of us even think about running for council. So it's a deal that was cut by a previous administration that, again, it's a legal binding deal. I mean, we can't unilaterally change it. It's against the law.
All deals can be broken.
Okay. Thank you.
Wendy Glassman, 703 Sunset Avenue. I think this is probably the right time to raise the subjects that I want to raise. First, thank you to Councilwoman Chapman for bringing the idea of the participatory budget program to the city. Thank you for the council for supporting it and the city staff who helped bring forward this experiment. As I had said at the meeting last week, the visual impact of the images are worth 1,000 words. And I really encourage everyone to go back, look at the presentation that's been recorded, and you'll see all of the ideas that have been presented. And I think that it will change some of your preconceived ideas about what the projects really are, based on the couple of words that are on the ballot sheet. But since a lot of people weren't here at that meeting, I just want to take a minute to talk about the project that I presented on behalf of the Sunset Lake Commission. And that is for the Art Bench Project, which is 7A on your ballot, which proposes funding up to five site-specific art benches created by professional artists that are both practical, beautiful, and unique, first for Sunset Lake Park, our largest park, as the start of an art bench project throughout the city. This project would be coordinated through the Public Art Commission and the Asbury Park Arts Council. We believe that the project represents a great opportunity to bring together goals the city and residents have deemed important. Accessible and idyllic public spaces, accessible public art, opportunities to engage in stimulating activities outdoor that can foster engagement that spans generations. We understand the impact of quiet, open green space on the health and well-being of residents in otherwise crowded urban cities. We also believe that public art in our parks is an essential element. We also believe that public art in our parks is an essential element of our city. Art has the power to transform ordinary and forgotten spaces into vibrant cultural hubs and connect communities through a shared appreciation and wonder of art. Art lets us absorb the beauty of our natural surroundings in a new way. The benches will be functional seating, but also pieces of art that are meant to be touched, explored, and even played on. The addition of the public art benches will enhance the quiet beauty of Sunset Lake Park by giving our community functional art and design that we interact and linger with. We recognize that free access to public art is an essential part of what makes our city great. We hope that this project is the first of many public art projects in our beautiful parks and open spaces throughout the city. We ask our residents to vote for public art, for creative place-making, and for beauty in nature. Again, I encourage everyone, please look at the presentations. They don't take that long to go through. And again, we hope that you support the public art program.
Thank you. And you got the, up what the gentleman asked? And?
So the building on Memorial Drive is about a foot and a half from the property line, and that is about 25 feet, more or less, from the curb. So it has a wide curb along Memorial Drive.
And did you have a follow-up question, or was that answered? You're good? Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to ask a question or speak tonight?
What about the diagonal parking?
You got to get up, you already spoke. It's one bite of the apple. Oh, the diagonal, I said no. You asked was proposed, I said no. Yeah. Anybody else like to speak, rehear, or if not, we're going to make a motion to close? Motion to close?
Move to close. Second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I'm going to just briefly piggyback on Wendy and thank the participatory budget. I was at the meeting, Yvonne was at the meeting. The projects were amazing, all of the projects were amazing, from kayak racks to art benches to playgrounds. And I think we all, I hope I speak for everyone, and let's keep it classy and vote for the project that you are most passionate about.
Thank you. We're now on to the minutes. I have the municipal council executive meeting minutes and regular meeting minutes of March 8, 2023.
Let's take a two-minute break, just so people who are leaving can leave in a quiet. If everybody could take their conversations outside.
Can you please, can you please either quiet down or take your conversations outside?
Take your conversations outside, please. We still have to finish this meeting. Please take your conversations outside. We have to finish the public meeting.
Now I'm talking, I'm getting trouble. I didn't tell them you did that. That was good for you. I knew you were looking for that. Did I get it?
Thank you, Paul. Thank you. Thank you. Bye.
Nice. Congrats. I will. I will.
I know you a phone call, like from a month ago.
Okay, guys, we told everybody else to shut up. Shut up.
Thank you. We're now on to the minutes. I have the municipal council executive meeting minutes and regular meeting minutes of March 8. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council and will be considered with one vote.
Obviously, there are not triple-pane windows.
These matters are considered to be routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular item, then said item shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. On consent agenda tonight, we have Resolutions 2023-166 through 2023-169. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to individual resolutions. I have Resolution 2023-170, a resolution approving payment of bills.
Move it.
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
No.
Resolution 2023-171, a resolution authorizing the transfer of appropriation reserves in the fiscal year 2022 budget.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-172, resolution awarding bid for a one-man refuse collections system vehicle.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-173, a resolution approving change order number one for Memorial Drive improvements project.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-174, resolution identifying of menu items as per the subsequent developer agreement between the city of Asbury Park, Madison Asbury Retail LLC, and Asbury Partners.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
No.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-175, a resolution authorizing a professional services contract to CDM Smith for wastewater treatment plant assistance and various design improvements.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-176, a resolution referring the arts and culture plan to the planning board for review and adoption as an amendment to the Asbury Park master plan.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-177, a resolution of the city of Asbury Park referring the proposed redevelopment plan for 1012 Asbury Avenue, city of Asbury Park, Monmouth County, block 501, lots 1 and 2, dated March 15, 2023, to the planning board in accordance with the local redevelopment housing law NJSA 48:12A-7.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to ordinances for introduction. I have ordinance 2023-12, which is the 2022 transportation update ordinance with a public hearing date of April 12, 2023.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
I have ordinance 2023-13, ordinance of the city of Asbury Park, amending and supplementing section 5-4 entitled Rules and Regulations of Chapter 5, Beach Boardwalk and Beachfront Regulations of the Code of the City of Asbury Park, with a public hearing date of April 12, 2023.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-14, ordinance of the city of Asbury Park, amending and supplementing subsection 4-27.4 entitled Application of Section 4-27, Film and Photography Permits of Chapter 4, General Licensing of the Code of the City of Asbury Park, with a public hearing date of April 12, 2023.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
If no one has anything else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.